Yeah.
All right. I'd like to call our meeting to a quarter. You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance place.
My Pledge of Allegiance is identified under the United States of America and to the Republic for British stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call and roll.
Uh, Trustee Maravka?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Sloup?
Here.
Trustee Bowden?
Yep.
Trustee Sterba?
Yep.
And Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Okay.
Uh, before we hit the public comments, I just wanted to, um, mention, uh, this past week, we lost, uh, Bev Ribbons, who was a longtime, uh, village employee. Um, she worked, uh, up front. She did as a treasurer, uh, positions the party a few years, so, uh, we'd like to, uh, press our condolences to her family. Uh, with that, we'll go to public comment. Anybody? Wasn't sure.
My name is Dave Grammer. I live on Drexler Road, just south of town. Lived there for thirty years. The truck traffic around here is, we all know Will County is out of control. I'm trying to get, I've been to county meetings, trying to get ordinance passed so that there's a state law that if the trucks are over sixty-five feet long, they have a five-mile limit of where they can go off of a state route, and they have to get back on that route. What's happening is they're using Wilmington-Piaton Road, so from fifty-seven to fifty is a Class Two truck route. The rest of it is not. So for then from Tucker Road to Drexler, to County Line Road, those are not designated truck routes. Designated truck routes are Route Seventeen and Route Thirty, but a lot of these trucks are using that as a bypass that is against the law. So trying to get an ordinance passed so that the, any county deputy could write a ticket, a citation. Right now, we have two truck enforcement officers in the whole county, which is kind of overwhelming. The county said they weren't, they didn't feel that they could pass an ordinance. That was according to the Secretary of State, or the State's attorney, I'm sorry. But I had, I have emails here and I give you copies of them. Speaking with a gentleman, Mr. Mike Olson from the state of Illinois IDOT, he said that it, it is legal to pass an ordinance, and there are other villages that have ordinances. Now, some of them are home rule, uh, villages, but, so right now, the state ticket is a hundred and sixty-four dollar ticket, which the state gets most of that money. If you have an ordinance, then the village would get that money. So, I don't know if it's possible, if Piaton would be interested or could pass an ordinance to enforce this over sixty-five-foot truck length. And also, I understand that there's a possibility that the county could change the weight restriction on Tucker Road, which is forty-ton right now. According to this Mr. Mike Olson from Secretary of State, said that a good weight would be twenty-seven ton, that way, school buses can go down, the garbage trucks can go down, and it doesn't disrupt the farmers either, um, so they would be able to go down there. They have a exemption during harvest season also. The county just, I just got this today, so the county did a survey on Drexler Road. So, um, it was from twelve AM on nine sixteen to twelve AM on nine seventeen. Seventeen hundred and ten vehicles went down that road, north and south. Of that, two hundred and seventy semis in one day, ninety over sixty-five feet long. So that means there's two or three hundred and sixty semis going down Tucker Road, pretty much, because not too many of them come off of fifty and go down Drexler. So that's coming eastbound and westbound. Ninety of those trucks did not belong on that road. So, I spoke with Judy O'Gala earlier. She needs some help if Piaton would be interested, at least to give it her some support when she goes to try to get something done at the county. Right now, she's, she's having a hard time, too, so, um, I'll leave this paperwork if you like.
What date was that survey? What date?
Nine sixteen to nine seventeen.
So that's a Thursday.
And I'll leave you, I'll leave you this information, too.
Okay.
So who did that survey?
The county.
The county?
Will County Highway Department.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we talked about this in the police committee meeting a little while ago.
Yeah, I think after a board meeting, or like in a board meeting, we were talking about scales and stuff, too.
Yeah, yeah. Any thoughts, Chief, or?
Well, they'd be eighty thousand, no matter what they say, across there. That's your problem. The sixty-five-foot length is part of the problem, but that Drexler Road, I mean, Tucker Road's all county-owned, not Piaton Road.
But the county says that supposedly, they can change the weight limit on that road to twenty-seven ton.
Well, that'd be the county could.
Yes, and then that'll shove most of these trucks, if they're sixty-five feet and they're loaded, they don't belong on there anyway. Or any of these container trucks that are loaded, they won't go on there. Any of these grain trucks that come from Indiana in the morning, pass my house, and start at three-thirty in the morning, they wouldn't be coming down that road either.
But you can only write them for the sign violation for the weight. You can't, uh, you can't write them for the weight difference for the road.
You meant if it's twenty-seven ton?
Yep. It's a sign violation. They, the overweight people get them if they go over an elevated structure or the bridges. That's where the weight volume comes in.
So then the thing is, is we'd need, you'd need to pass an ordinance then for the length violation, if, if that's possible. Then that's what Braywood has, Lockport has it, Elwood has it.
I think Beecher has.
Manhattan has, I believe Beecher, there's quite a few of the villages are passing that ordinance. Most of them are two hundred and fifty dollars. Jolietta's either five hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollars. That money goes to the village, not to the state, not to the county. So, if you can give Judy some support, that would be great.
Sure, thank you. If you have to want to leave that, I'll just leave this with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Nothing else? Okay. Onto our consent agenda, then. There is one correction there. The homecoming parade is supposed to begin at three-thirty PM, not four. Uh, any board member have any questions about the minutes or counts payable?
Just the, what was the weed spray for the new egg center?
Curbs.
Curbs?
Curbs.
Okay, okay. Is that the chemical itself, or was that for them to apply?
You like Roundup?
Yeah.
It was the chemical.
You guys put it down. Okay, thanks.
And then Bob, uh, what was, what did we pay for concrete with the curbs for Zowsky?
That was a curb repair in front of a residence, uh, so it was a small section that was right in front of their driveway. So I had it repaired.
And then, um, the tree removal, was that from the storm?
Storms.
Okay.
For storm.
Okay. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, uh, obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Removed by Trustee Maravka, seconded by Trustee Sterba.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yep.
Trustee Sloup?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, on to staff committee reports. Administrator report?
Uh, you don't have anything in your packet. I'll give you some updates on a few items, um, to highlight. We're gonna have a preliminary meeting with, uh, our website designer, just to start planning on the new website, so it'll take some time, but we're gonna get started on that. We'll be working with our insurance provider to work on a Tier Two insurance plan. For the surplus, um, property that you declared over on Second Street, um, we came upon a, a bidding site that will do it all online, and we provide them the information, and they'll put it up and take care of it for us. So, I'll be having some more conversations with them so that we can get the surplus items out there for sale, if anybody's interested. So, once we get the link, I'll send it out to everybody, so, and we'll advertise it so local people can bid on stuff. And it's nationwide also, so if somebody wants to come pick something up, they can. The pension board is meeting tomorrow evening at five-thirty, right, Chief?
Five.
Five. Representative Haas, um, she is preparing to host a meeting with IDOT on behalf of her constituents, and we submitted our priorities in advance, so maybe I can, uh, we definitely have truck traffic on that list, so, uh, but I, I appreciate the comments, uh, that were given just now. Just some code updates. Um, there, there's a property on Fourth Street that was vacated, very rundown, dilapidated residence. That was one that our previous code officer identified and, um, worked with the homeowner. Uh, we were able to, instead of it just sitting there vacant without doing anything, a local, uh, developer is now renovating it, so, um, I think that's a really, that's really good news. Two oh six North Second Street, um, the deadline for scope of work is passed, so we'll likely be looking at citations in the near future, um, unless something else could, uh, transpires. Two oh seven Hickory, um, we have a judgment, um, order, a judge order saying that citing has to be put up by the end of October, but we'll continue to have court dates on that to hopefully progress, um, the finalization. The, um, Schroder apartment fire, um, we're, we're just on the verge of issuing a, a building permit for those renovations, and...
A building permit, or?
A, a building permit, for the renovations.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's gonna be fixing up. So five-twenty-eight Schroder, um, that permit is still valid, uh, but we're keeping an eye on it to try and move that along. There was some furniture, I had a complaint of furniture on the curb, um, on Schroder from, from an apartment, something moving in and out, had been sitting there for a month. So there's no pickup service there, it's a dumpster, so, um, instead of, you know, bothering the Public Works, um, Home and Disposal picked it up, and will attempt to bill the property owner for that. There was some real estates, a complaint about signs for, for real estate for sale in, um, public right-of-ways in different places, so, according to the sign ordinance, and this was over on Meadow, Meadow View Drive, according to the sign ordinance, there's just one, uh, for-sale sign allowed per home for sale in, located on the property. So unless they, um, submitted for some other kind of sign permit, those were not, um, legal, and they have been removed. So that's all I have for an update.
Questions for the administrator? All right, Public Works report?
We have a few updates. Branch pickup, uh, this is for the upcoming month. Branch pickup will continue to the end of October. So the last pickup will be the twenty-fifth. Leaf collection will start in October, gonna run from the eighteenth until December third, weather permitting. This is a, uh, once-a-week pickup. Uh, the department will be planting some trees in October, um, various areas. We getting our trucks ready, we try to get them ready in October for the winter season, um, so we're ahead. I was informed past, last week, um, crossing my fingers, we don't have breakdowns come this winter, um, because parts are gonna be scarce, so... The state is still in the process of, uh, the roads outbid. I should know something this week. Uh, the road proj, projects are still ongoing. North Street is complete. Wilson's going to get paved with the final surface layer tomorrow. We had a few issues on there, but they have been resolved. Uh, and we're still waiting on sod for West Street. Weather hasn't been really great for that. And, uh... We'll also be helping chief with homecoming parade this week. Can I ask the residents, it's harvest season. Watch out for our local farmers and their equipment. That's all I have.
Um, Bob, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
About branch pickup? Can you just reiterate what the rules are? Because my neighbor's had theirs in their front yard for like, since our last storm.
Okay. Uh, I don't have the rules in front of me, but I should know that, but, uh, the issue is...
Six feet long.
Six feet long.
They have to be parallel to the curb.
Okay.
And no higher than four feet.
Okay.
And if you have multiple piles, they have to be separated by a foot or two.
Okay, so only four foot, six foot, okay.
And only up to ten inches diameter is the mat.
Nothing with huge logs.
If they're over five inches, they have to be in, uh, eighteen-inch sections.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They have to be pointed in the same direction.
Yep, they all have to be parallel to the curb.
Oh, parallel to the curb, but I mean the, the limbs. I mean, not crisscross, they're...
Right.
Yeah, not just a pile.
We call it tangle.
Yeah, not a tangle, that's a tri...
If they're, if they're one way, it just makes our life, uh, way easier, so...
Get in and get out.
It's really simple if you pile it the right way, it's first time. Makes their job so much easier.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about, sure. What happened on Wilson Street? I see some patches cut out where, um, looks like they had to repair it before they put the final coat on.
That was soft spots.
Was what?
Soft spots. Those are dug out, down, we put some binder in there, tightened them up, ready to go.
So when they put the first layer down and rolled over it with the...
It wasn't the, the compaction.
The roller.
The roller. You could see the waviness of the soft spot. It wasn't hard.
Yeah, needed a new base.
So we dug it out, we got down to the dry clay. Once we got it out, put the binder in there, rolled it, then they passed the compaction, the compaction test.
What's the warranty when they put a street like that in?
Well, streets should last you twelve years, but, uh, being that it's over concrete, um, and we've done Wilson, it seems to hold up pretty good, uh...
Well, Troy, that's a question, what, is there a warranty?
No. Because it's an IDOT job, they don't allow you to put a warranty on it. It's pretty much, you know, you could hold a retention on your final payment, but only for so long. When it's not a MFT job, we, and it's just a local job, we'll put a one-year warranty in our specs, but IDOT makes us take it out for, what's their money?
I mean, but you should be twelve years out of road. You should.
Another question I had, um, you said, um, October twenty-fifth is the last pickup for branches?
Yes.
Is, is that the, for the whole town?
The whole town. The leaf collection and brush pickup will overlap for a couple weeks, so...
All right. Any other questions?
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Tom's looking great. Thank you.
Okay. Treasurers report?
All right, everyone has their treasurer's report from the packet, or from my email.
Yes.
Uh, general funds, uh, for the month of August, we had two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars in revenue, which is typical. Uh, that number also did include the final payoff of our ADA sidewalk grant of sixteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, so that grant is completely done and closed and all paid off. Expenditures were two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, six dollars. Again, there were no unusual, um, bills during that month period. Um, you will notice a little more activity in, uh, MFT and Capital Improvement Fund this month. MFT, uh, twenty-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars in expenditures, uh, that was a payment on the resurfacing project at North and Wilson. The, all, both those projects are being paid from MFT, so that was a payment for that. Capital Improvement, we had twenty-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-five-dollar expenditure. A big chunk of that was for the Alborn Street project, um, and then, um, about eight thousand was for the new server that's being installed to handle police and the village. Down on the police pension fund, you'll see a revenue deposit of seventy-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars. Uh, it's slightly higher than a normal month. There were three pay periods that month, so it represents three pay periods, because that's when we pull the money, so, that's why it's slightly higher there. Um, and then in, um, oh, the tip number one fund? You'll see an expenditure of thirty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Thirty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars of that had to go back to Will County. Um, and we've talked about it in the past couple months, um, uh, for tax return due to an appeal, um, that was won by the, first, the, um, property owner that appealed it, of an over-assessment, so, that was that, but, so now everything's done with that, so... That's about it. Any questions? We'll have lots more numbers coming from the auditor. I know, everyone's excited, aren't you?
Looks like they're hiking me up there.
I know, I'm trying, Jenny. They don't love it like you and I do.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the treasurer?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy.
All right, Police Chief report?
Really nothing today, Dr. Hart. Let's get back to numbers.
Yeah. Uh, Troy, Engineering report?
I don't have anything other than what I've already reported on.
Okay. All right, uh, my comments, uh, first of all, Halloween, uh, we're gonna stick with three to six PM again this year. Last year was on a Saturday, so we decided three to six. This year, it's on a Sunday, so we're gonna stick with three to six PM again, so, um, the next meeting, I, I appreciate everybody giving, um, that they're gonna be here at the next meeting. I'm not gonna be here, uh, Trustee Hudson's not gonna be here, but we'll have a board, so, uh, we will have meetings. Before we go tonight, we need to schedule a couple of committee meetings. The, uh, Public Works needs to meet, the Urban Building Committee to meet, uh, AOC needs to meet by the end of October, so, um, maybe before we adjourn, let's, we'll just figure out dates for all those, okay? We had a blood drive scheduled October twenty-seventh, but that got changed. Did you get a new date on it yet?
Uh, about ninety-nine percent sure it's gonna be November second, um, from eleven, eleven AM to five PM.
And that'll be at the...
At the...
Yes.
Okay. You can sign up online at redcrossblood dot board. Uh, so this past week, um, the administrator, the clerk, Trustee Jones, myself, attended the annual Illinois Municipal League Conference. A lot of good seminars, training, networking opportunities. I encourage the other trustees to try to attend at least one day next year. Attentive dates are September twenty-second to the twenty-fourth. You get a lot of good information, and you get to meet, uh, you know, a lot of people. It's a good networking opportunity. We're having ongoing meetings with the developer, Sue Hospitell, on the travel center development. We'll be bringing to the board a modified annexation agreement for approval in the coming months. Construction slated to begin in the spring. He has to put together a new financing package, since so much time has elapsed since, uh, that was originally approved. We're gonna be retaining upland design for a fee of forty-five-hundred dollars to complete and submit the grant application for the rebuild Illinois Main Street grant. Uh, I believe they have the expertise and experience in grant writing that'll give us the best chance to obtain that grant money for our project. Um, just a side note on that, I went to a couple of, um, seminars at the IML conference about downtown, you know, renewal or redevelopment, and, um, the one thing they all said is that if you don't have a plan or a design, you know, you're never gonna get anything done, so, I think the money we spent on this is, is well-spent, and, um, I think we have a really good chance of getting a grant for this money, but, um, so anyway. Our GIS mapping project is ongoing with Robinson. Uh, the base map is complete. They're now developing an overlay tool that allows us to add our own components, such as locations of signs, trees, infrastructure, and all that. So once we get that tool in place, um, we'll have some training with Public Works and all of us to be able to utilize that. This is something that is gonna help future administrative and Public Works people, you know, know where everything's at, and how we plant trees. We'll be able to say what kind of tree it was, you know, what day it was planted, and, you know, uh, I think it'll just, um, make things a lot easier in the future. Speaking of trees, we did submit a grant proposal for tree planting in the village parkways. We asked for the maximum, which was three thousand dollars. If we get that, we'll be able to plant approximately twenty-five, uh, more trees. Uh, we have used our budgeted funds to purchase twenty-eight trees this fall, and, uh, as Bob said, they'll be finding, planting them in the coming weeks. We're still accepting applications for part-time Public Works position and code enforcement official. Uh, the administrator and I will be attending an Economic Development Workshop sponsored by the Will County Center for Economic Development in Frankfurt tomorrow morning. I think that's it. Anybody have any questions for me? All right. Uh, no old business, new business, uh, Jackie, is it Niels?
It's Miles.
Miles.
Yep.
Uh, with, uh, S-K-E-O, uh, giving our annual audit presentation. It's all yours.
Thank you. Uh, you should have all gotten a copy of the audit report in a blue folder. Um, so this is your audit report for your fiscal year ended March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. If you look to, right after the table of contents there, that is our, um, independent auditor's report. That report, the first part of that just goes through explaining a little bit about the audit process, um, but at the top of the second page, uh, that is where it lists our opinions on your financial statements. So, the first thing we have there is on your governmental activities. We do have a qualified opinion. Um, the qualified opinion, or we have qualified, excuse me, so a qualified opinion on your governmental activities, we have an unmodified opinion on everything else. Um, so the unmodified opinion is what most people would refer to you as a clean opinion, um, it just means that everything was found to be materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. Um, the governmental activities is qualified, so that means that, uh, it was found to be materially correct as well, except for one item, um, and that one item is related to Gatsby seventy-five. So Gatsby seventy-five, um, essentially would require, uh, you to hire an actuary and have an actuarial study done related to your OPAP. You have chosen not to do that, so not seeing the cost benefit to that, to you, um, so as a result, we do qualify your opinion on that. That's not uncommon, we have many other governments that do that same thing. Um, and we've had that same modification in there for the past couple years since that came into play. You just go ahead to our next report, which is on page four. That is our independent auditor's report on your internal controls and compliance. Um, in there, we explain that we do consider your internal controls while we're performing the financial statement audit. Um, again, your internal controls, that is your internal system of checks and balances, uh, within your department, um, and any compliance things. So if we did have, we don't issue an, um, an opinion on the effectiveness of your internal controls, but if we did see any issues, we would, uh, point those out to you here. So we do have a finding reported, um, on internal control, uh, so that is a significant, there's two types of findings we could have on internal controls. We could have a material weakness or a significant deficiency. Here we have a significant deficiency, and that is the lesser severe of the two. Um, so that finding is the very, very last page in that entire packet, um, and it relates to what we call segregation of duties. So when you have a smaller-sized government... So, when you have a smaller sized government, where you only have a few individuals in your administrative department, um, it can become difficult to separate all of those responsibilities out so that no one person has enough responsibilities to, you know, potentially, um, harm the village in any way. So, with that, uh, you just need to make sure that when you have that happen, that you have some mitigating controls in place. So, we did have some mitigating controls that were not, uh, yet in effect through the end of the fiscal year, um, so we do have that finding reported there, uh, and that is the same finding that we have reported last year. So, if or when, um, or since then, if you implement any changes there, um, we would be able to, uh, remove the finding in the future. So, with that, if you go back to the front, then, uh, we do have your financial statements there, so starting on page six, uh, your statement of net position, so this is your government-wide financial statement, so these financial statements are a little bit different than the reports that you guys would look at during the year. Um, these, the reports that you look at during the year are on the fund level of accounting, so we have those in here for you as well. Uh, the entity-wide ones, um, have a few differences. The biggest ones are your capital assets and the debt. So, your capital assets, uh, here, they show up on your balance sheet as an asset, um, whereas at the fund level, those are just capital L.A. expense that you see on a monthly basis. Um, and then your long-term liabilities, so your debt, um, some pension liabilities, things like that, uh, those are recorded at the governmental activities, um, governmental-wide level, uh, but during the, on a monthly basis, those would just be expenses that you would see on your reports. So, that's the main difference between them. Uh, you'll also see that there's really no activity on your business-type activities that used to be your, uh, water sewer fund, uh, with the sale of all of that. The only thing that's remaining there is, um, some customer, customer deposits, utility deposits, uh, that we're still working on cleaning up. Uh, the next page, that is essentially the, it's the statement of activities, that's your income statement, um, again, at that entity-wide level, um, and that just goes through kinda area by area. Uh, the next page, if you can hit C on page eight, that's your governmental fund balance sheet, so this would be more similar to the numbers that you would see during the year. Um, and then you have your general funds, your capital improvement fund, your, um, N.I.T. fund, and then that non-major funds column, that is your VDD, and both of your TIP funds are, uh, compiled into that column there. Um, so that is your balance sheet for that, and then if you go to more pages, to page ten, um, that is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Um, so all of your revenue types are listed there, your different expenditures, um, and then down to the bottom there, it shows your beginning fund balance, what your net change was for the year, uh, whether it was positive or negative, um, and then your fund balance at the end of the year as well. So, overall, your governmental funds did end up with a positive change in fund balance of three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars per year. After that, we do have proprietary fund financial statements, which again are related to, uh, the customer utility deposits that are remaining as part of that water sewer fund, so there's not, there's no activity there on those. Um, and then we also have a few statements there on the police pension, uh, fund as Um, after that, you have all of your notes to the financial statements. This just provides a little bit more detail about, um, how that information is put together. Um, there's additional information on your capital assets, on your long-term liabilities, um, on your investments, uh, pension plan information as well, um, so there's a lot of stuff in there. And then all the way towards the back, uh, there's some additional pension information and then there are, uh, schedules comparing your budget to your actual expenditures for the year, uh, by all the individual departments. So, some comparisons there for you. Uh, and then there's a few other information for you there as well. You should also have gotten a, another report, the special tax allocation fund, so this is related to your TIP information, um, so some reports on compliance there, um, we did not have any issues on that report as well. And then you should also have a letter from us, that letter we are required to provide to you. Um, in that letter, we would let you know if there was any other concerns or issues that we came across, if we had any difficulties in performing the audit or anything like that, we would present that to you there, um, but at these report, we didn't have anything. Uh, and then attached to that, you also have a copy of all of the journal entries that were posted, um, throughout that process, and there are quite a few, but most of those aren't actually the result of auditing and issues or errors that we found. Uh, most of those are actually just related to preparing the financial statements and recording those, um, long-term liabilities and capital assets and things like that, the differences in the function of, uh, financial statements. So, that is all, oh, and these are final reports, these were issued, um, last week, uh, and then today we did complete the, uh, A.F.R. and we submitted that off to the state comptroller today, um, and then Marcy has a copy of that to send to the county courts office as well. But that is all I have for you, unless anyone has any questions.
So, had this memorandum, this first one?
That was me.
That is for you.
Yup.
Is, did you, it says, both things says twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty balance.
Oh, I didn't change the date. I did, that was a typo.
The one should say twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
And what, as of what date is that?
The thirty-first of March.
Of March, yeah. So, that's what we started this current fiscal year.
The fiscal year starts on April first, it ends on March thirty-first.
Yeah. Questions from trustees? So, we lost a little money in our general fund, but we made it up with other funds like the BDD or.
Yeah.
Police pension or motorcycle, correct? Other questions? Do I need a motion, we need to accept the, um, audit? Or do we need to motion to do that or?
Uh, I, I think generally you guys do.
I take a motion on second to accept the results of the audit.
Okay. Hope there's no further questions. We obtain a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sluse.
Local vote, trustee Jones.
Yeah.
Trustee Sluse.
Yes.
Trustee Morefka.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Sturba.
Yes.
All right, I M.D. is a resolution to accept master service agreement and a service project scope of work with Duratec Enterprises to install and configure a new server, install and configure Office three sixty-five email. So, this is a project that's been a long time in the works, uh, we're trying to consolidate our servers, uh, into one machine, uh, that covers both police and cabinet side. Uh, we're also trying to update our, uh, email program and, um, we've already approved the funds for this, but we need to accept these agreements so that they can proceed. So, Todd is here, who's the president of Duratec, uh, to answer any questions. Um, I don't know if you just wanna give a brief summary of what, uh?
Well, you did a pretty fine job there. It's pretty straightforward. A couple of things, um, the reason for the consolidation and reason for bringing both systems together is really a cost savings for a village. You had two independent networks running within your village, you had double the cost on, and some overlapping cost. By combining the server into one server, uh, we can securely keep information and data separate, but there'll be a cost savings for a village when it comes to backup and security and things as we move forward. Uh, and the email upgrade and, uh, migration, uh, migrating to the Office three sixty-five email platform for the same cost, we'll be able to add layer of security and, and spam filtering in for your email that you didn't have currently, or you don't have currently. So, again, it'll be a cost savings for the village. For the same expense you're paying today, you're keeping, you'll have a newer email platform and added security, so, uh, the reason for the email migration.
Are you doing the backups onsite or offsite?
Uh, they're both. So, we follow the, we follow the NIST standards, three-two-one rules, so there's three copies of the data, one onsite, uh, one offsite, uh, and there's three copies, so you get your working copy and backup copy onsite, backup copy.
How often do you back up?
Uh, server gets complete backup every hour and we offsite those every night.
Great. And then can you just talk a little bit about cybersecurity, where we've gone from and to?
Well, we've got a long way to go yet in cybersecurity.
We will, we'll get to.
Uh, this is the, this is the first step, uh, so getting the server and the network redone now will allow us to start to follow the NIST standards and what NIST is, the National Institute of Security and Standards. Uh, we follow those standards to, um, make sure your network is compliant with, in the future audits when they start to come down, uh, and the segregation and separation of the network. So, this initial phase will segregate the network, segregate the server from the production and workstations and allow a secure, uh, transformation of data out of the network. Uh, but there are a lot of layers of security that we're going to need to add into your network as we move forward, so this is kinda the first step, get the foundation built. Uh, once we have the foundation, then we're gonna be talking more about some of the other securities that we need to add into your network and into your data systems to make sure your data is safe and secure.
Any other questions? Okay, well, this will be resolution twenty-one dash R ten. Uh, we obtain a motion to accept these agreements.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by, was it trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, local vote, trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Sluse.
Yes.
Trustee Morefka.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
And trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next is a resolution of support, uh, thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Uh, resolution support of the twenty-twenty-one Illinois Safe Routes to Schools Program. Uh, I mentioned this briefly last meeting, uh, there's a, uh, a map in front of you of proposed sidewalks. This grant is due this week and, uh, Troy and Amy have been working feverishly on this, trying to, um, get this submitted at a timely fashion. Uh, we did go to the school board last week, uh, and bring it up to them because a lot of these sidewalks are gonna be on school property. They are favorite, in favor of it in theory, um, but I'm not so sure that they would, um, join us in a match, because it's a twenty percent match program. So, Troy, if you wanna maybe speak about the total costs and what our hurdles are with this?
So, the, the red lines on the exhibit that you see would be where we would be proposing new sidewalk and some of the intersections taking out the existing sidewalk, including like the compliant, uh, ramps. And these are kind of a connection for some of the points that, you know, where there's gaps in the sidewalk and get, get more parts of town to the other. So, the red area would be approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for construction, so that's what we were gonna apply the grant for. I did find out today, that, I don't know if you saw my email, but the eighty percent is actually the two-fifty, so when you're estimating project, you can estimate, I mean, to, to get the maximum out of it, your project could actually be, it's like three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand or something, with the eighty percent matching the two-fifty. So, knowing that, I mean, I don't think you really need to do any more areas, but then you can use construction engineering as well, um, for the grant, since, you know, there's extra money for the eighty-twenty split, so that would save a little bit. So, if, say you apply for three-hundred-thousand dollars for construction, construction engineering for the red area, your twenty percent match would be sixty thousand, and then your phase one design, that's not eligible for the grant, um, engineering, so that ballpark might be forty thousand, seems like a lot for this, but if, because it's a federal project, it's a lot different than doing a local project with the plans and the environmental stuff you have to go through. So, to do all the red with your local engineering and your twenty percent match would be about a hundred, a hundred thousand, which costs.
And so, then I asked, uh, Troy, so what if we, so what if we just did the Oak Street sidewalk to get to the elementary school and we just paid for it ourselves and didn't get a grant? So, what did you say that probably would be?
I said, depending on the area and what you actually did, it, I mean, it could be around seventy to ninety thousand, um, you know, if you were really bare bones, maybe a little less for constru-, you know, for construction, we'd have to talk, well, exactly what I do, but somewhere in that range.
So, I guess the, the, what I'd like from the board is if you'd like to go ahead with this, knowing that we're probably gonna have to lay out, you know, a hundred thousand, uh, if we get this grant, uh, we'll have to, you know, take that out of the general fund. I mean, these, we could use M.F.T. money for it, but we got plenty of streets to do. We, you know, we, we don't wanna take away from our street, uh, projects. So, um, I mean, it's a lot of sidewalks, I mean, it would be really nice to get this done around the school and it would help people from, you know, the southwest side of town be able to get to the elementary school easier, um, make it safer for, you know, kids going to the soccer fields, um.
Keep them off the street.
Yeah, exactly. So, and Oak Street, um, I got, Bob has had questions about the side, you know, why can't they have a sidewalk out there? So, I mean, this would, would help at least one side of the street have a continuous sidewalk. So, uh, I guess what we need to, you know, if you wanna move forward with this, uh, giving us direction on you wanna go that way, um, and then Troy and Amy will get the grant together and get it out by Thursday.
What'd you say it would cost to do just Oak Street? Seventy to ninety?
Yeah.
And then if we got the grant, it'd be a hundred?
A hundred to do all the red.
Yeah, I mean, so why wouldn't you just get the grant and just do all of them? You're spending all the money, like, if you're already doing downtown, you might as well do the side, you might as well do sidewalks too. I mean, what's a hundred thousand compared to six million?
Yeah.
And this is for, you know, the kids that go to school and people walking and everything like that?
Yep.
And if, if the village does get this grant, which, when were the announcements? Maybe next year for the spring or, did they say? I can't remember.
I don't know.
Okay. But either way, if you were to get it, because you gotta go through I.D.O. and their federal review process, this would probably be a twenty-twenty-three construction project. Not next year.
Sounds better than nothing.
Right.
So, um, trustee Jones mentioned there's a couple lots on those, um, connections on, is that Glenview? That possibly those might have houses built on them.
One of them is sold, the one to the south, and they, I don't know what their date of construction is, but that's sold and it, I own the other one. I was told one time that you're better off not to put sidewalks in until you got construction, because it probably would get tore up.
Yeah.
But that's just what I was told, I've never experienced it, so.
Yeah, everyone driving over it and then you got digger sewer and everything.
Well, if those houses go in, they'll put the sidewalk in, then you'll just save some money there if, if you get the grant or, you know.
Okay. On, on Oak Street, um, looks like we're avoiding the culvert?
Yes.
Is that what's going on there, culvert?
Yeah.
Oak and Mill?
The reason for that, because if you include that in this sidewalk project and it's an I.D.O. federal money project, that culvert is gonna add a lot of environmental and playing, a lot of extra engineering and review stuff to a federal project.
So, how's the water get on, so when the, how, when the sidewalk comes down by the soccer field, how's the water get underneath that sidewalk?
Are they gonna put like a little bridge or something there?
There's a culvert, a culvert starts there.
There's actually a structure there.
There's a structure.
But the water coming goes down.
You go over the structure basically.
So, right there, you can go over, over it with the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it should, it should work, but if you wanted to put a sidewalk on Mill Street, I would recommend doing it low, funding it locally, because we could, you know, design a culvert somewhere where it's already there without having to go through all the I.D.O. stuff or, you know, the environmental stuff if you fund it locally. So, if you wanna do this, but then, you know, connect that at a future time, at Don Mill, I think.
Okay. So, it's easier to go the way you guys have it?
Yeah.
So, on Oak Street, it's kinda like a road to nowhere? Why, why does the sidewalk continue to Mill Street?
That was just an option I threw in there.
Yeah.
Just, you know, if someone's coming from Mill, you know, they probably won't wanna do, make that loop, you know, around, but.
Okay.
If you wanna take that part out, you know, if you think it's not necessary, you know, that's totally fine.
It'll almost be like a bike path, kinda having it there.
Yeah.
Come on now, hit the sidewalks.
Yeah, so that sidewalk that goes south from Oak Street to that culvert, you know, when you get a big. you know, when you get a big rain, it'll probably be underwater. But 90, 90% of the time, it'll be fine.
It drains fast.
Yeah.
How big is the parkway? How wide?
On Oak Street?
Well, on any of it.
Um, I.
I guess what I'm asking is, is it wide enough? We can put some trees in there if we went to?
Um, I'm sure there are already trees in some of those parkways, aren't there? Or are they on the other, would they be towards the outside?
No, on Oak Street there are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be, the sidewalk's not going anywhere, but it's not a ready sidewalk. It's kind of just going to be completing the gaps over there on Oak Street.
Those, those lots where that goes through on Oak Street there?
Uh huh.
Do those, do those belong to the school?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through that.
In the school, obviously.
Yeah, I remember a long time ago when they were deemed not buildable, but.
Yeah, so how the school got them, I think when they bought the whole thing from the previous owner, I think that got them. Yeah, they weren't aware until we let them know this spring.
Yep. That would be a good place for some trees.
Yeah. All right, if there's no further questions, the, this would be resolution 21 dash R11. The motion?
No motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sturba.
Roll call vote, trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, item D is a resolution to accept and authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement for installation of pedestrian flashing warning signs along Wilmington-Piaton Road at Meadow Lane in the County of Will. So, this is all connected with our, another sidewalk project that we have on, you know, Wilmington-Piaton Road. So, the Will County Department of Transportation wants us to put up, you know, flashing warning signs so people can get across the street there. So, that's all part of this project, you know, we've got to get an intergovernmental agreement with them. And, you know, maybe one more step in the right direction, so.
Does that become like a crosswalk then? Yeah, if, once the project's built, there'll be a straight crosswalk there at Meadow Lane to kind of in between, you know, exactly which driveway, but one of the driveways in between two of those driveways by the Casey's or the Car Wash. So there'll be the flashing, what, what we proposed were the flashing, like pedestrian sign and actually has LEDs around the diner sign that continuously flash. It's not when you press a button, it does constantly flash. Solar powered, just for traffic to be aware of it. Yeah, just so the tra-
Does the traffic have yield?
Um, yeah, we're, well, we propose to put up those signs that say, you know, state laws stop pedestrians.
It would be put rather down closer to West Street?
Can, once we go farther down closer to West Street?
Like closer to number of the tracks?
On Wilmington Road, you need to submit a permit, you know, just a separate project if you want to.
Are you talking about just a sign, like saying? Like a warning? Stop for pedestrian crossing.
Because sidewalk is going to continue further east, which if people want to come down further and then cross.
No, it's not going to go further east.
Well, that's where it's going to stop.
Yeah.
At Meadow Lane, right now, yeah.
Oh.
It's not going to go to Ranch.
I was thinking.
That's, that's another.
So we're covered.
Yeah.
What about the signs like feature has on Route 1? Because they have a pedestrian crossing, it's a button, but it's battery powered, solar powered. And up, I forget how far, like 500 feet ahead, when they press a button, it sends a signal, it'll start flashing saying, yield to pedestrians walking. That way you don't have it going all night long. As it's solar powered and battery powered, then it's hit the button and then it starts flashing.
That's an option. The only reason I sometimes don't like those is because then the pedestrians think that a truck or a car is for sure going to stop.
Yeah.
You know?
They start to look.
And then like kids might press the button, be like, I pressed the button, I'm good to go. And maybe they'll, but some towns do that bit as an option.
Yeah, because I know that they have on Route 1, I think at Miller and Route 1.
Yeah.
Most are have to teach your kids to look both ways again. So there's a lot of adults who don't look both ways and they just walk right out in front of you.
So there are options to the push button ones, I think they cost a little bit, like.
Was it hard to convince Will County to do this?
No, actually. They told me, they, they never really gave me a direction because I called, you know, their permit engineer about it and tried to get a feel for him and we talked about this. He said, oh, well, you know, send us our, send us your plans, we'll look at it. But I don't, you know, I don't think they actually want much involvement with it other than they're going to allow it, but they don't want, you know, to tell you what to do. Because they're saying it's not their stuff, it's the village's stuff. Right.
Hence the intergovernmental agreement. So it's completely our responsibility, even if they decide that they need to move it or have it moved or changed in some way.
Yeah, if they widen the road or however you say it, it's not village to take them all over.
So, and we'll, we'll be paying for this, right?
Right.
Okay. And the plan is to do it, you know, to bid it out this winter sometime and get started?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the big thing is we got to, we got to get the easements.
Right.
Which I know we're working on, but yeah, like I said at the other meeting, that construction prices are so high right now for everything almost, that everything we've been getting lately. So that's why we're just recommending waiting. Doing it, bid it in the winter, get a bill in the spring, hopefully.
Okay, this is resolution 21 dash R12, need a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sturba.
All right, roll call vote, trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, I didn't need questions at the press, let's see, anybody? So, let's schedule some meetings. First, so AOC, I'd like you guys to meet to review. So, at the end of this month will be our sixth month from the start of the fiscal year. So Marcy's going to put together, you know, sort of a half year review. So, I'd like you guys to meet to review that. Might be a couple other little things too, but he has on his list. So what looks good for you three?
Uh, two days, I think.
That might be two, you want to do it towards the end of the month?
Yeah, maybe like the last few weeks.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have a P and Z on the 20th, so we couldn't do it that night.
Let's, uh. I don't know, I'll get this question.
So what about two weeks later?
What's the date? The 19th of October?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's fine with me.
I can do that.
And then Gary?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so 5:30?
5:30, okay. I can do five, you guys want to do five?
Five.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll do 5 o'clock.
Okay, so 10:19 at 5 o'clock for the AOC?
All right, so what about Public Works? Are you still on nights?
Yep, 3 to, 3 to 11.
Okay.
I mean, I can leave. I can leave later, I can be here probably like 6 o'clock on board meeting time. I got to be there a couple hours to make sure it's going right. Unless you want to do it before 3.
Who's, it's Mike and?
Yeah.
Who's the other?
And Pat.
I'm at Public Works?
No, Julie. Wait. No, I think Pat.
I don't remember. Mike Jones, Nick Sturba, Pat Bowden.
So the earliest I can do is 5.
5? You said you could do 6.
I can do 6.
6 is fine, just can't be any earlier than 5.
So what date do you guys want to do it?
You want the end of the month or?
No, probably sooner the better for you guys. You got stuff to talk about trees and.
Is there a day that's better for you, Pat?
Tuesdays are good. Mondays are okay.
Tuesday, the 5th?
I can do the 5th.
Um.
Get your.
Yeah, I can.
Make sure you get the posted.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
Okay, October 5th, 6 o'clock for Public Works.
Okay, then the last one, we want building committee to meet. And that's you, right?
Yeah, Charlie, Julie.
Me.
Julie and Pat? Is that on everything?
Yeah, you're on everything.
Me, Julie and Mike Jones. I cannot do the 7th. Or anytime after the 27th, so anytime before, that's fine. Because I might be out of town.
Do you want to do the 11th before the board meeting? Or can you?
Sure.
Does that work for you?
What time?
How long?
I'll take it 5.
5?
Yeah.
So Monday, the 11th at 5?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Painless.
Yeah. Any other questions, correspondence, communications?
I have a question, I don't know if this is the right place, but you know, down at the corner of Sumner and Second Street, going into, is it Cleveland Steel? They've been doing some dirt moving on that entrance that goes in from the west side there.
Yeah.
The east side or, what's going on there?
You want to answer that, Bob?
Yeah, that's the dirt removal from their, their pond they put in.
Well, they may have put the pond in a long time ago and then they had that dirt stacked up where that entrance was. And then when it rained, all kinds of stuff would wash out and people along Second Street on the east side would get residue and cornstalks up three or four feet in their yard. Now they've moved that pile of dirt north.
It's just half of it. That's half the pile. So they put it, I mean, they put it silk fence.
They got that in?
So that they wouldn't have the runoff that people were expressing though. They're still in the process of moving the other half.
So what, what will the final end result be?
It'll be back to what it was before, once they moved the other half of the dirt. I mean, it wasn't open, it used to be an old drive is what it was.
Right, so they don't plan on opening that up or?
No, no.
Okay, that was my biggest concern because you can't turn it, you know. And that should stop the problem with the.
Correct.
And if it doesn't, is there a backup plan?
They can regrade it.
And how about the, where you can go in that other entrance going in straight north on Second Street? That's a mess there, there's kind of a gate and kind of an elevated drain and crap in the parkway.
That's an old, another entrance.
An entrance, it's like they never really finished the parkway.
Yeah.
Can we lead on to?
Yeah, I can reach out.
All right, any other questions? Great, now we obtain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Sturba.
Roll call vote, trustee Moravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yep.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Bowden?
Yes.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you.